Welcome to the workshop between the Town Council and the School Board. I'm also President, Town Manager, and Superintendent. Thank you all for being here. There may be a few members, maybe one more counselor and a couple more of the School Board members that may meander in, and that's okay. I didn't make an agenda. Usually, Tom does it for me, so it must be his fault.[46.12][46.12](Laughter).
He'll take charge.[48.12][48.12](Laughter).
But generally, tonight is just a group discussion of where the budget currently sits, so that we can look at any other potentials for adjustments in the budget. And also, I just found it important to, again, continue the word I hate, the transparency of the Council and the School Board. The more times that we, you know, meet together, I think the better the information that gets out to the general public, who are very, very concerned about the potential of a large tax increase. I've received at least five, if not six, emails today with folks very, very concerned about the rate. They're looking at the net appropriation rate, they're looking at the 9.29 percent, and not happy. So, anything that we can do that helps the budget anymore, perhaps tonight there'll be a light bulb that comes on, I don't know. But I do know that the School Department, I'll probably start with Kate, has a presentation from the School Department relative to the current status of the budget based on deliberations of the Finance Committee and their vote on Monday night for the adjustments that they made into the budget.[132.16][132.16](Coughs).
Actually, I'm just Vanna tonight. I'm putting some buttons and Chris is going to be there.
Okay, Chris, I'm sorry. She just pushed a button.
Yes, that's right. Every Pat Sajak needs a Vanna, right? All right. So, the first slide here, basically, it looks at the different philosophies which we talked a little bit about, we touched a little bit on in the Finance Committee joint meeting. For us, it is a slightly different approach. For us, it began about eighteen months ago with the community dialogue, and that forum, we used that to establish shared goals, community goals for education, and also to look at the expectations of the Scarborough School Department. So, that's an opportunity for the community to get together and give us some input and some ideas of what they want the school system to look like. We just had another very successful one last season, so that process is ongoing. But this first budget was based on findings from eighteen months ago. I think it's really important to note that the first reading of the budget was the student needs-based budget, and it was based on the School Board asking Dr. Entwistle to craft a budget that meets the needs of each of our students regardless of their capabilities, and it was full compliance with federal and state mandates. So, we really are putting the emphasis on the three requirements from the Council upfront. Our obligation is to make sure that the education is funded properly, it's a state mandate that we're required to handle. That's one of the reasons why the Town Council is a separate governing body from the School Board. We've got certain obligations we have to meet as well. So, basically, that's why that first budget was so drastic or so different, if you will. So, I wanted to give you a little bit of insight into where we were coming from, where our thoughts are. So, if you look at the five-year average expenditure increase from the Town Council, and these are actual numbers, this isn't conjecture or opinion, these are the real numbers. We, basically, since 2009, there's been a cumulative increase of $4,485,000. That averages out to about a 12.6 percent increase over the five years, which leaves us really with an average of about 2.6 percent a year. The really important thing to take away from this slide, though, isn't necessarily the numbers. They are important, but it's the pattern of the numbers. They're high, they're low. They're high, they're low. And we can correlate that nonlinear funding with student performance. So, when we have years that are short, we can go back retroactively, look at some testing data, and look at some areas, and see that it does impact the programs. So, one of our goals is to try and maintain that consistent rebuilding that we talked about, and maintaining that infrastructure, and that does tie in with the Council's requirements of maintaining the infrastructure and not scaling back. So, we also looked at Scarborough versus the state. This is the state average per student spending per year. Scarborough is consistently low there. That's, even with an increasing trend, you'll see we're starting to close that gap, and our goal ultimately, as a board, I think, as a minimum, is to get to the minimum state funding level, if that's critical. I heard from several people last night at our community dialogue that were transplants from outside of Maine and outside of the greater Portland community. They are looking at this stuff when they come to move here. They were very clear, it came down to us and a few others. If you click the cohort, the cohort group is really the places that we're competing with for drawing in new families and drawing in new people. And I know the cohort is, there's a lot of, I don't want to say anxiety around it, but there's a lot of questioning about it. The cohort really is a very good way for us to measure against some common factors. It may not be, as we said in the Finance Committee, it may not be exactly Macintosh apples to Macintosh apples, but at least it's Macintosh, bold and delicious. And it gives us a pretty good basis of where we stand in terms of the surrounding community. The state also uses data like this to determine EPS funding, to determine how schools are positioned for various programs. The other thing that's coming down, too, which we found out today, was there's possibly school grading coming down the line. I don't know if this is going to factor into that or not, but there's a chance that we may not like what comes out of that. I don't know. So, my point is that we don't have to like this, we don't have to agree with it, but that's a mechanism that the state's using and that a lot of communities are using as a reference point to show are we, how we do compare and how we are progressing. So, using those two different scenarios, we ran some simulations, if you will. We looked at scenario one, which is what would happen if we funded it just at state average? And this data is older data, it's from 2011, 2012, which, if you notice, in our funding year, that was a very low year. But if we funded just at that state minimum level, the difference in funding would have been $2.7 million in addition to what we had funded as a town. And that doesn't even compare to the second scenario, which is if that same snapshot at that same time, if we funded just at the average level to those thirteen surrounding communities, twelve surrounding communities, we would be number seven out of thirteen. And that would result, even if you don't agree with that, the fact of the matter is a $7 million increase is what would have been required just to get to that level. So, as a board, looking at this data and looking at these numbers, it's, quite frankly, it's rather shocking. So, you know, it's very important to understand that we're not starting from a blank slate or from a place that's not realistic. We're looking at historically, we're looking at comparisons, and we're looking at what we think it needs, where we need to be, basically. So, where are we now? On Tuesday, the School Board adopted our budget, our second reading. The one on the left is the student needs-based budget, and the one on the right is the budget that was passed and that we're presenting to the Council for approval, or at least for a vote. Basically, we, you know, as Judy mentioned, and as we mentioned in the Finance Committees, it's a lot of work, it was a lot of heavy lifting. There are a lot of things that came into that process, but the bottom line is, I don't know if anybody's going to be happy with this budget. Well, I've heard from people that are going to be upset that it's too low. I've heard people that obviously are going to be upset that it's too high. We've got an obligation to find that compromise and find that middle ground somewhere, and I think we've done a pretty decent job of trying to get there. The goal for us is to, you know, maintain our programs, not expand them, not, you know, go after capital equipment improvements and things like that, outside beyond where we need to be tracking just to try and get to that minimum level in the state. Please, Kate. So, in the budget, we're looking at an increase over last year of a little over $2.2 million. And the reason I put this slide in here is I wanted it to be clear, not so much that the wages are high and that the state shift in retirement is there, those are all factors, but of that $2.2 million, there is a very small percentage that's actually going to programming. So, this isn't $2.2 million there hiring new teachers to expand language arts programs, it's not there. This is our basic operating increases, and that's the breakup, that's where the most of them are coming from. So, when you see that number, it doesn't mean that we're going to put $2.2 million back into programs, it's just not there. So, finally, this is where it comes out, this is how it shakes out with the Council. Basically, we're, if you accept the budget that we put in front of you, and we hope you will, and I believe these numbers line up with Tom's, we're looking at a change in the school budget of 5.61 percent. That puts us below the county percentage increase, for sure. It also brings our total percentage change in expenditures down to 3.97 percent. So, I know it doesn't hit the three that you were looking for, but quite frankly, to get to that number from our side would have resulted in dismantling programs, and that's really something we need to avoid, we really need to avoid that. And I'm hoping we can compromise at this point and accept this, because it really is, it is a standing still budget. It's not two steps forward and one step back, it's standing in place.
Just some corrections in those numbers that are up there. The town, the percentage is 1.49 percent. And the county is 5.72, and then the adult ed is the 8.03. So, the bottom number should be 3.95. Is that correct, Tom?
I believe so, yes.
I think we did have a chance to incorporate the county.
Yes.
So, I'm hoping that gives you guys a little bit of basis. I mean, we know, I think we all understand it's not an easy process, and we do have, we do kind of approach it from different sides sometimes, the municipal versus the school side. But we, you know, I can assure you, this is not an arbitrary number, it's a lot of work. It's been a lot of work. And I thank Judy and the Finance Committees for allowing us to have a dialogue upfront. I think that was helpful. It certainly, we used some of the suggestions it brought us to, you know, I think a more clear, transparent understanding of where we're coming from.
And for the public benefit, now, let me get this right. The 3.95 percent is the operating expenses percentage, but when we look at, because I did get some communications from residents today, and they're looking at the 9.2 percent, and that is the net budget.
That's actually the increase in tax levy, so, and therefore, the proposed increase, potential increase in the tax rate to meet that higher levy.
And if we look at numbers, the town gross, based on that 1.49 percent, is the increase is $4,014,812. And the school number is a little bit different from Tom's, is a little bit different, but approximately 2.2. And then the adult ed is an increase of $11,236. And the county, their gross went, theirs went from $2,075,000 to $2,190,000, and that's a difference of $118,630. So, overall, we're looking at, with operating expenses, $2,714,067. In order to get to a 3 percent on the tax rate per thousand...
No, that's just on expenditures.
On expenditures. We would have to look for another $650,000 from the budget.
It's not fair. Judy's looking at this paper that I have here, and not all of you have, and I'm pleased to provide that to you. I give you that now, or we can take your questions with the schools.
Yes.
I'll pass them around. Would you like me just to...
Yes, please.
Do it to the first part?
Yep.
I'll let everyone give a copy first. So, as the first page suggests, this is a listing, detailed accounting, if you will, of the work of the Finance Committee through five sessions, most recent of which is just Tuesday this week. And so, this shows the changes up and down, both the expenditure and revenues. And so, you'll see the middle column, bottom line, the total change to the total budget is $1,705,061. And we're certainly pleased to talk about these particulars. That's the work of the Finance Committee to date. Page two are the numbers that have been talked about, and Judy just went through in further detail. This shows, and includes, those Finance Committee's proposed changes, and does result in the current status of 3.95 percent increase in expenditures. I think it's fairly self-explanatory. Just for comparison, we started out, we're at 10.91 percent, so we certainly have made progress toward the goal, not there yet. And then, I have a table in the back which looks like this, which might be helpful. I know it's helpful to staff, just to get a sense of the order of magnitude. The green shaded box in the upper left-hand corner shows you where we are currently, and this is calculated based on the average value, however, of $300,000. And the intent of this is to calculate what the impact on the average tax rate is. So, where we sit currently, we're looking at a 9.2 percent increase in the tax rate. You'll see the ensuing, or the resulting effect on taxes. In this chart, you can follow it along and see, as you reduce that impact on tax rate, what it means to the taxpayer. Perhaps most importantly to this meeting is look at the smaller box to the right. That correlates directly to those numbers, and you can see how much would need to be removed from the budget in expenditure, or added in revenue, which is unlikely, or a combination of the two, to meet those different benchmarks. And so, again, it's fairly self-explanatory, and it ends where we currently are, at a tax rate of $13.80. So, just for everyone to appreciate, from where we are right now, to get to a flat tax rate, we're looking at removing over $4.6 million. And then, the last pages are revised computation pages, the first one is a blended one that shows the full tax levy, and then there's a breakdown for school, town school, and county. And just a final comment, I guess back to the first page, staff will prepare a motion for the Council to consider next Wednesday at your budget meeting or your regular meeting where the budget would be taken up. All changes to the budget must be introduced as amendments, and so, the practice has been for the Finance Committee to offer their recommendations and a motion. Very often, counselors will want to extract elements out and vote on them separately, but that's what I've talked to Counsel Roy about, and we'll prepare that motion for consideration. It'll come out on Friday with your packet. Okay? I'm pleased to go back through and provide any further detail on what I just gave a high-level overview on. Judy?
Counselor Malcolm. I just have a question. What happens in your budget, you figured in there what would happen if, you know, the governor's proposal of the retirement shifting and things like that? You figured that all in, the one point, whatever it was, for...
That's the expenditure, sir.
Yeah, you figured that all in, so, that's part of the budget. So, what happens if things change in Augusta and that money's reinstated? Where does that reflect any place, or where does that go?
Well, we did talk to the Finance Committee a little bit about that. The way it's sent to us, and Kate, she's going to hit me in the back of the head if I'm wrong here, but I believe what happens is it's part of our general purpose aid, so it goes in as an added amount there, with the understanding that we will write the checks against it on our expenditure side. So, if the state decides to fund that, we won't have those expenditures, but they'll also pull that money out of our general purpose aid account as well. And the concern that we would have is that the formula doesn't go both ways well, so we may actually lose more if they plug us into the regular accounting formula to pull that money back out again.
So, in a simple way, if...
It's a wash.
Yeah.
It's a wash, basically.
Or we could lose more, is really how it's going to...
But it is a wash, if they go through and you're reimbursed and I agree with your odds a place else.
The money was run through the EPS formula, and we ended up getting credit, or getting credit for the fact that we were going to end up with that extra expenditure. If, in fact, the expenditure goes away, the calculation will be rerun again, and instead of $1.2 million in reduced subsidy, it's likely to be, if it were a wash, it would be $1.7 million. So, whether it's $500,000 in additional expense and $1.2 million in less revenue, or this goes away, but they adjust the subsidy, it's 1.7 here. And as Chris has said, our understanding is, this EPS formula, which is one man in the state who can explain it to you, Jim Reyer, if this thing is to be reversed again, the thing that we would be afraid of is that we would be, that we would lose more money, and it would be in the form of the revenue. So, simple answer is, it doesn't do anything, because the bottom line of our subsidy gets recalculated, and likely, at best, would leave us in the same hole of $1.7 billion.
Good. Thanks for that explanation.
The other, just critical piece of that, it does occur to me, of the $2.2 million or so in increased expenditures, $525,000 or so?
$533.
$533 is retirement, and so, I think it's important to note that should that expense go away, their percentage increase will go down commensurately.
Right.
So, it is reflected in the, because it's a new cost from last year.
And on the municipal side, either Judy or Tom?
Sure.
Where there was a proposal to reduce some funds, how would that work out?
But based on my analysis of the governor's proposed budget that is still in flux, there's no less than five areas that could affect us. I've talked to a lot of folks, and I've actually included a reduction in revenue resulting from the proposed change to the commercial excise tax. That's for the state to keep all those funds, whereas since 1929, they've been kept locally. That amounts to a $170,000 decrease in our budget, so that would certainly be good news if that's restored. I've not included any other potential revenue impacts. Again, that's a bit of a calculated risk in terms of understanding the politics of those proposals and where they're likely to end up. We're not likely to know until mid to late June. You know, the state is under the same requirement to pass their budget by June 30. I suspect they'll be down to the final hours this year. And as I understand the process, this week, all the committees will report to the Appropriations Committee, and then the Appropriations Committee is the one that actually works through the budget, and ultimately, the full legislature will look, must vote on the budget. All indications are that the governor will likely veto things if they're substantially different from his proposal, and so, it remains to be seen how it all shakes out. But we're certainly going to have decisions made locally before we know what the effect is from the state.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think Amy Vogt sends a newsletter out, I don't know how many people read that, but I mean, there's a lot of movement in the Finance Committee on a state level, and it just depends on what happens when it goes to the legislature for voting, certainly to the governor. But they're talking about looking at reinstating some taxes or increasing some taxes in lodging and cigarettes, and looking at the state sales tax and moving it back up to the 6 percent that was in vogue when Josh McKernan was governor, and then we reduced it back to 5.5, we reduced it to 5. Also, looking at adjusting the amount of money, state tax, state tax that somebody that earns over $100,000 would pay, they had bumped that down from 8.5 to 7.5, reinstating that. So, they're looking at about a $198 million shortfall, and with some of those tax adjustments, they can perhaps do that. So, it's kind of, it was a little green of hope, at least, for me, when I read that, that they're, you know, the Finance Committee is moving. They also kicked out of that, the circuit breaker changes, which is important to a lot of our residents here in Scarborough, they were going to be reducing the amount of money that folks could get for the circuit breaker, which is to help those folks who don't have children in the school and need some help with their taxes. That was one of the efforts, to help rather than taxing them differently. And then, also, the homestead exemption proposal that was out there, to start the age at 65, so that people between 60 and 65 would lose that homestead exemption, which is, it takes $10,000 off the value of your home before taxes are levied on it. So, that, it might reinstate that, but they kicked those two things out, as far as they were voted down, so.
I think the real key, I don't mean to rain on the parade...
Yeah, I know.
These proposals, or the new tax proposals of the budget, needs to be veto-proof.
Yep.
And so, two-thirds is a very, very high bar for, you know, the whole market basket of things, so it's...
But I think, you know, there's certainly outcry statewide in all communities. I think all communities are being affected, and certainly in southern Maine, we're being affected much more than communities in northern Maine, because we're supposedly rich, and at least it appears that way to the state, so. But I like to keep my glass half-full, so I'm going to be real positive about it, and it's going to...
I'm going to keep it half-empty and we'll be, feature somewhere in the future.
(Laughter). It will come out somewhere, somewhere in the middle, I think, hopefully. Other questions or thoughts on the budget?
I'd just like to ask the School Board a question. There was an article in the paper this morning about Portland School Board reducing their budget. Did you people read that?
I don't know.
They eliminated 55 positions.
Right. And one of the ways that Portland has been...
On the Finance Committee.
Interesting in that reduction over the past several years is to add, to anyone interested in retiring, another $20,000 last year, if you want to retire. And that's not an area that Scarborough has, to my knowledge, gone into. So, in other words, I mean, you're looking at 10 elementary schools, three middle schools, two high schools, very different towns than...
I think it is important to note, I mean, the cohorts that we're looking at are random. They're equivalent, relatively equivalent in terms of student population size, relatively equivalent in terms of, you know, property values and things like that. So, they're a pretty good comparison, and Portland is often an outlier, because it is very unique in and of itself. It's a much different system than we run for.
And I think anytime, as well as on the municipal side, it's very difficult to say, let's compare us with the, it isn't that apples and oranges. Sometimes they're still the same, they're apples, but they're different brands, and so, what public works might provide for the town of Scarborough is far different than what public works in O'Loch provides. And so, it's really difficult to read all of those variables out of the equation and come up with the equality.
It's a little more straightforward on the school side of things. There are some criteria that the state looks at across the board from all districts, and that is probably as close as a head-to-head comparison we can have, and we look at that data as well. So, you're right, I mean, it's not an arbitrary mixing, you know, you have to get as close to something like we have in some counties. to something like we have in some counties.
My point, I think my point is more that they took a look at the effect of the budget on the taxpayers and I don't necessarily see that with your budget. Even though your very first goal is to be economically friendly or, I've got that term in it, I can't remember the slide, but...
It's clearly possible.
Credible?
Maybe.
I think, you know, the first budget, the, I've heard comments about the first budget and Chris I think explained it, myself and my team were asked to put together the budget that we should have to meet the needs of the students here. If we were to have that, you would be looking at the numbers that are, that were in the first column essentially. Key is compared some criteria here. I didn't mean to start a paper tapping thing, but, so hold on.
Picture it. Yeah.
Where are the...
I'm lost there.
Okay, sorry.
Take two, we got one. That's something different. I said, take two, we got one.
I know, I think I am lost there.
That's it.
It's the only way to take two.
Oh, you're happy?
No, right, no need to be.
Okay, good. I make a really striking example of this here. Well, I like the... It's yellow and green. What I'm talking about is the yellow numbers up at the top, projecting an increase in expenditures of almost four million dollars. Truly, in order to meet the needs, to make the changes, to restore the programs, to increase the investments, to innovate the curriculum, do all of what would be appropriate to meet the needs of the students, that's what that yellow budget is. So being physically responsible and credible is really then taking a look at numbers that were not available to us, that either felt favorably or unfavorably. For example, a big unfavorable is five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars added in state passed-on expenses. So we've gone through and taken what really is a student needs-based budget and where we should be and we now can see where the gap is between where we should be and where what we're hoping to do, which is basically to continue to hang on by our fingernails to the improvement efforts that we're making. A while ago, there was in excess of forty positions lost here in Scarborough. It wasn't all that long ago, in fact, it was just four years ago. Over the course of two years, there was in excess of forty positions. This is not even reinstating those positions. In fact, we would still, even with this budget, we would continue to be twenty-five or twenty-six positions below where we were in our oh nine, oh ten, oh ten, eleven, I believe were the numbers, where we were at that time. So this is, this is not a budget that is pie in the sky by any means, nor is even the yellow budget, the student needs-based budget, pie in the sky. I think what Chris has shared with you is the discrepancy between what Scarborough is spending and the state average and there is nothing changed, there's no oranges, apples or anything. It is all apples, macintosh to macintosh because it calculates in, how much do you spend on student programming? How much do you spend on administration? How much do you spend on transportation? How much do you spend on facilities? And you can look in any one of those places and the good news is that Scarborough spends less than the state average on transportation. That's because we do a darn good job. We spend less than the state average in terms of maintenance and facilities. It's because we do a really, really good job. Unfortunately, we spend less than the rest of the state or on state average does in terms of student programming. That's not a really good job. That's where the gap is. We spend less than the state spends in terms of administration. So the people who are running, this is not a heavy, you know, a heavy handed, top-heavy kind of organization. In fact, we're less than the state average. So, and those are all very comparable. You can pick any district you want, you can look at state averages. Now, when we look at a more appropriate contrast of a cohort group of twelve other districts that are like us demographically, that we want to compete with in terms of attracting homeowners and businesses, we find ourselves in that pool of thirteen, not only in thirteenth place in terms of our spending per pupil, but way below, we're in a low thirteenth percent. And that's what, that's what those numbers are saying, in one of those years, basically to just reach the average, and we're not even asking to be in the average of those thirteen districts, but if we were to be in the average, it would have meant a difference of seven million dollars in that one year for the schools. So you get to see a contrast in terms of the level of spending that's happening in places like Welsa-Gonkwa, York, Warren, yes, Cape, Balmouth, Cumberland, you know, those kinds of districts. They're appropriate districts that we compete with every which way. Our kids are going to compete with those kids to get into college, they're going to compete with those kids to get jobs. So I think that, starting with the student needs-based budget is not a tactic to try to create a large number so that another lower large number looks better. It is, it's, there's a method to the madness. It makes, it makes sense. It's looking at what we would be like if we were providing the same types of programs that those other twelve cities provide. So I think this sheet is sort of, is a nice one because it basically shows you the changes that have happened. There's always a little confusion at the bottom third of the sheet because Tom carries a number, the way that we look at the numbers a little bit differently, he carries one that includes the school nutrition budget and it's always a little bit lower. So that's why you see the five point six one percent where we continue to reflect the operating budget without school nutrition because the school nutrition is basically a, it's a wash, there's no net cost there generally. So we started there, these are the adjustments and I would just direct your attention to the very bottom piece here, which is reduce new proposals to the most essential items. The new proposals started, again, in the student needs-based budget, in excess of a million dollars and they were not, again, pie in the sky, they were things that this school district needs. We reduced that in the first flush to about half that and now we have reduced it to a very minimal amount. In fact, the amount being invested in new proposals, and anybody from business would see this as being absurd, it's essentially what we're reinvesting to grow our business and to make it stronger, is less than one-half of one percent of this budget. So there's, there's nothing in, you know, there's nothing that shouts out, this is outrageous, this is crazy, this is overspending. It's not at all. It is basically trying to, quite frankly, catch up and be a little bit more competitive with the pact that we should be running with.
The comment of catching up, a lot of people are gonna grab onto that comment and say, this is gonna be continuation year after year after year. And they're already saying that the school budget every single year seems to be higher and higher. And the honest truth of the whole matter is that we're taxing our residents right out of town. People just cannot afford to keep on paying increases. We've had a thirteen point six percent increase in our tax rate over the past three years. This, if this budget passed, we'd see up to twenty-four percent increase in our tax rate in a four-year period of time. The CPI has only gone up seven percent. We're nowhere near in balance.
And I'm not blaming you, George, or what the school board, or it's, it's a whole myriad of things, but somehow we've got to get our arms around it.
But see, Ed, one of the things that needs to be understood is catching up by increasing one-half of one percent of the budget, that's what I'm talking about. Catch, the, are the, the new investments at one-half of one percent is what we're, is the way that we're catching up. So I don't, I don't know why anyone would take issue with that. And if you look at moving out of town and you look at moving to any other town around here, including the, including the other twelve that we're comparing ourselves with, which are all contiguous districts in this entire area, you're not going to find a lower tax rate and you're not going to find a town that spends any less per pupil on its students. This is the lowest. And as I said, we're not only the lowest, we're way below, way, way below, so...
And I think true to that, although the municipal budget didn't, we don't have a major, major increase, but the longer you put things on the back burner, the more costly it's going to be one year, two years, three years down the road to meet the needs. And people don't only move to Scarborough because of our education system, they look at the entire community. How close am I to all the amenities that I like? What are the services that the town offers? You know, people treacherous here and they always say, I always know when I get to Scarborough because the roads are, you know, cleared better or, you know, those kinds of things. But, you know, the municipal department has done the same thing, has put things, pulled things and not, not come forward with them and it's gonna catch up with us. We have to, we have to meet the needs of the residents and so, you know, the residents I guess need to say, what am I willing to do without? Because, you know, the minute the snow leaves, people want to know when they're gonna be down to clean the beach. And a neighbor of mine came to me the other day and said, when are we gonna have the major junk pickup? And we haven't done that for several years because it's hot. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that citizens, I like to hear, what is it that you'd like to do without? Because you can't get those things done and have people work for minimum wage. That is not gonna work for minimum wage. So it's a conundrum, it's a catch-22 and I think you have to determine, number one, what you want for services and number two, look at your other communities. And I think it's an excellent point. We were second lowest last year in the rate of...
Cumberland County?
Yes, Cumberland County. And based on what we're seeing with all the other communities out there with, working with their budgets in the articles in the paper, we're still gonna be probably the second lowest in the great, whole greater Portland area as far as rate for a thousand mil, so.
But our houses are worth more, so.
Well, yeah.
It's a catch-22.
Value is more and, you know, that's, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a totally a town-driven process, it's a state-driven process based on, you know, beaches. We went through, back in the nineties, a revow of the beach areas and there was, you know, a lot of adjustments there too, so.
Yeah, but our town has giant, almost twice as much as upon any other town around here. That's, that's the reason why, no rate so low.
But I think, you know, the one thing we have to work hard on and that's why we have SEDCO and I think is that, that commercial base. And we have to, we have to grab, grab a hold of more commercial base in order to buffer some of the subsidies that's been, you know, long and the short of it, I, you know, I welcome any opportunity for, you know, somebody to give me a real clear cut reduction, further reductions that they'd like to make in either side of the budget that makes sense.
I'd love to...
And I'd love to, you know, other councils to give us some suggestions too or certainly for residents to send emails and, you know...
I would like to point something out, I mean, all, everybody on the board is a town person as well and we're all subject to the same taxes that everybody else is. And, you know, I mean, I've heard many people say that we're disconnected and we're not tied to reality and what's going on. I think it's really, it's really, really important to understand that we're not like the other town departments. I think sometimes it gets, that flushing or that melding, if you will, of a whole budget into one big mass is a little misleading. I mean, we have thirty, three hundred, thirty-three hundred students showing up every day regardless. We can't throw a little class for a day. We can't, we can't, you know, do alternate Thursdays where we have, you know, no power or something. We really are restricted with how we can culminate because we have a lot of unfunded mandates that we all know about, we have a lot of responsibility that we have to take on whether we like it or not. So I think the point, Ed, is, you know, I'd be happy, I would consider it, you know, ultimately a success if we could get to the state average and I think that's a very low bar to set and I think that's an expectation as a town that we really should be striving for. Do we get there today? Certainly not. We will always plan to catch up until we get to that point, but until we can get to that base level, I, that's where we are. And we can talk about philosophies, but the facts and the statistics show that we are, and that gap will continue to grow if we continue at the flat line.
And I think for all of us working to, not on a local level, but at a state level and a national level as well, I mean, encouraging representatives or running for office themselves to get up there and say, see how it is, don't forget where you came from.
I just don't think that we're gonna be able to tax our citizens out of this mess that we're in. We gotta look at other alternatives and as a council, we're doing that. We've, one of our goals this year we set was pro-business community and we're putting a lot of time and energy into trying to attract more businesses into this town. That's what we have to do on this end. But, you know, I look at this whole budget thing and I know the school is different, I grant you that, I give you that, with what you have to deal with. Fact of the matter is, on this side though, we're looking at everything and fire department, they need four more firefighters, firefighters, paramedics now, you know, we gotta figure out how we get that into the equation, you know? Public Works, whether they need a piece of equipment. And I know you're much larger, but the fact of the matter is, all those decisions that we make on all of those other departments, they certainly have an impact on the overall, the tax budget that people have to do. I think people are struggling in this day and age, you know, and I've heard more this year from people who said, you gotta cut us a break, you know, on this. I don't think this recession turned around the way we thought it would and we hope it would, you know, and things haven't gotten better faster or as fast as we would like to see. But I know it's pretty disheartening, I'm sure sitting on that side when you want to move forward and you want to fix something that's broken, but I guess we're gonna all have to be patient, we're gonna have to work even harder, our pro-business attitude and we're gonna have a workshop on that next week, you know, to make sure that that's moving forward. But I guess there's a number of things that we're gonna all have to do, but I just don't think that we're going to be able to put the burden in large chunks on our taxpayers and expect them to come up to the plate and, and pay that because we're gonna be in trouble, I think, you know? The real mill class now is the lower middle class, you know, and the senior citizens in this town, you know, that number keeps going up and they're in tough shape. I mean, I've heard from more senior citizens in this budget cycle than I've, than I've heard all the years that I've been on the council. And there's some genuine concern there, you know? They, things aren't going up for them, you know? Whether it's investments, social security or whatever, they're trying to struggle and those are the, those are the people that really support a good, strong school system, as you know. And those are the, those are the people that really support a good, strong school system, as you know. They have in the past, so... I just, um, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but whatever we come up with, um, certainly it's nothing personal. And, uh, when we vote on this, um, in a, in a second vote, I, I hope it's the right thing, and I hope it moves people ahead, it, it moves us ahead forward. And, um, we can work something out that's reasonable for everybody.
I, well, I appreciate the public's recognition that it may be broken, that helps. I, I think, um, all, all that is very valid. On our side, we hear the opposite, and, and for obvious reasons. We hear people coming to us who are upset that we're cutting the school budget this much. I, I don't think we're ever going to get, if we, if we could collectively come up with a budget that everybody goes, yeah, that's great, then maybe they don't need us around anymore, I don't know. But, but I think that's one of the reasons why we put the school board portionally to a public vote. Because there are, uh, a lot of varying opinions in town, and they're not always the, the people that are standing at the podium. So, I, I think the state has recognized that. I think that's one of the reasons why it's separate from the municipal budget and it is required to have a public vote. And, um, you know, I, I can say that, uh, you know, we, we're not operating in a vacuum here. We've worked with, with your finance team. We've, we've pressured, uh, you know, our school department as much as we can. We're taxpayers too. Nobody likes to write checks if they think they're not being put in the right spot or if they're not being used the best way. So, I guess my appeal would be, uh, you know, we, we hear it, we recognize it, we have adapted to it as best as we possibly can. And at this point, I think it, you know, it would make sense to, to see what the town thinks. And I would hope you guys would at least support that offer and, and say, you know, let's, let the people decide, and then we can, you know, we can, we can go from there.
I, I just, um, Council Roy, uh, for Tom, I just have a, would you just clarify what happens? This goes to the voters in the date, and what happens if it's approved? What happens if it's rejected? Where do we go from there? Could you clarify that for the audience?
Sure, the, the school validation vote, uh, scheduled for May fourteen, um, that will be held in these chambers. So, don't come, don't go to the high school, come here to town hall. It's the school budget that is put out for the validation vote, so-called. We asked some further questions on this ballot. We asked, uh, is it too high, too low, or just right, adequate? Kind of Goldilocks question, right? That sometimes helps, uh, depending on the outcome of the vote. Sometimes it confuses it further. But nonetheless, we asked the question. And then there's a third question on this ballot, which would be, do you wish to continue this practice of validating the school budget? We're able to ask that every three years. So, in the event that it fails, then we're back to the drawing board, so to speak. And, uh, we're tasked collectively, I think, with coming up with a new proposal. Perhaps she'll have some guidance from the voters in terms of how the answer is too high, adequate, too low. And you put it back out to the vote. That's certainly one of the reasons we scheduled the school validation vote in mid-May, to allow some time on the back end, that in the event we need to rework the budget and go back out, that takes time. So, um, and we keep doing that until the voters approve it, frankly.
And the budget that goes out to the voters is the budget that the town council passes?
Correct.
Not necessarily the budget that the school board brings forward?
It's certainly not the school board's budget. It's the, it's the budget that the Scarborough Town Council approves, and you're scheduled to do so next Wednesday, you think.
But the voters are voting on the school portion of that budget.
Correct.
And I think that, that's important. And just to clarify again, there was a question, well, or a comment, that, you know, well, then we should be able to vote on the town budget as well. And just remember, for the public benefit, that this is the town council manager form of government, and that process dictates that the town council, who are elected by the people, make that ultimate decision. Will take any input towards it, but it, it, that's why we're elected, so, so people understand that.
I should just mention in further response to Council Awkward's question, in the event that we're unable to have our budget approved by the voters by, um, July first, the charter does provide for how we carry it forward. I shouldn't have mentioned it, 'cause I don't think I can articulate it.
I think that's state law, I think, huh?
It's state law, and it's, it's, it's more clearly articulated in our charter. So, there are provisions, uh, and I believe it's, um, mistaken, falls back to my proposed budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
Because if we don't make a decision on that budget, or, or by June thirty, it falls to the manager's budget.
Which I would just note, uh, includes the student needs-based budget, um, as that starting point. So, um, that's just something to be mindful of. Inaction could produce a further impact.
Beneficial to get something passed, whatever that may be.
And it's real important, and we said it before too, with the finance committee, it's important that folks get out to vote on this validation, so that we don't have six, seven hundred, eight hundred, or fourteen, you know, thousand registered voters making a decision for the other thirteen thousand, you know? It's really important that folks get out there and say, do they agree with that budget? And if they agree, is it too, too low or too high? Or if they disagree, is it too low or too high? That's, you know, that's how they can give us, uh, the assistance on that budget. But if they don't get out there and vote, it's gonna fall where it falls.
If, if I could, I'd just like to not lose, um, Ed's point. I think it's an excellent one. You know, potentially, we're looking at as much as a twenty percent increase in tax rate over a four-year period. I think we could all agree that that's not sustainable. I think, uh, we'll be tarred and feathered and run out of town. So, I think we need to be looking at structural change, and that takes time. That deals with contractual obligations. But really, my point is, I think during that period, we should appreciate why that tax rate is going up so much. I mean, tax rate is a simple calculation of how much we spend and how much the communities work, the value. And dur- so during that period, um, I think we've done a fairly good job. Others might disagree. One of the charts shown by the school tonight shows that there were a couple of years where they were flatlined. So, I think we've done our part of, of keeping the expense side in check. What's really driving the tax rate increase is the fact that during that period, we've lost almost four million dollars in non-property tax revenue through the E P, um, GPA model. And our value hasn't increased, um, the way it had in the last fifteen years or so. We were on a, on a pace of seeing value change from year to year of about sixty million dollars. Much of that was commercial industrial.
Now we're in at fifteen.
And now we're in the pace of fifteen. Those two factors together have produced these dramatic clips upward in tax rate. So, to Council Awkward's point, I think, um, trying to increase commercial industrial tax base will help. And, and increasing that, um, our total value will help. We're such a small receiver that it almost doesn't matter anymore. I, I hate to be so cynical, uh, but, um, you know, I, I did a calculation. Less than seven percent of our budget's covered with non-property tax revenues for mothers. Less than seven percent. We're almost a non-receiver, essentially. And so, it's borne because of the tax structure through local property tax.
We need that one percent local tax. And that may come out of this year, but...
You need a casino.
Yeah. I just had a question. Um, I do see here, um, on the sheet that you gave us here about the expenditures change, that you are showing a seven percent increase in salaries and wages. So, I was hoping you could maybe speak to that a little bit, about what kind of a percentage you're talking about, um, unless, I mean, these are union contract-driven. You know, what, what is this percentage that we're looking at?
Can you direct, uh, direct us to which one you're speaking to? Well, some reason that this represents seventy-six percent of the overall operating budget, and it also includes the increase, um, over half a million dollars that was passed on to us from the state. So, the number is inflated by the half-million-dollar, um, um, retirement cost that are being extended. I can assure you that no one's receiving a seven-point-four percent increase. It's not wage increase, it's, it's partial now.
Both the benefits, too. Both benefits, too, the health insurance.
So, um, well, maybe I'll, I'll simplify that question. What were the, um, what is the contract, I guess, for the union side, for the teachers, for the increase?
Contract is being negotiated.
Okay. So, let me change that. Minus five-hundred thousand, it's still one-point-five. So, we're, we have that on salaries that you're estimating for your request, or...
It's not, it's not new. It's, 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 you know, the, the, the contracts are structured in step increments. And once the contract is signed, we're obligated to fulfill those. And I, my understanding is that number is what our obligation is to fulfill the existing contract. The contract that we available online, all the public to look at, the current contract. So, it's on the website if anybody cares to take a look at it.
Basically, basically each year, a teacher's incremental step level changes. So, basically, we took what was this year's contract and bumped each person that we currently had employed, correct me if you hit me on the head key if I'm being frank, and bumped them to their next step. So, if you were supposed to be a bachelor with something else, then you've gotten up to the next level. So, that all adds up to all of this. Plus the health insurance change, plus the teacher retirement change.
So, it wasn't, like, the last teacher contract wasn't necessarily that there was a, like, three percent salary bump or anything? That's not what's reflected here. It's just what currently exists, what everyone is owed next year, just from the natural progression of the staff.
Okay, so, what is owed done in, in, is it ballpark of? I'm just trying to wrap my head around what's the new, you know, minus your five-hundred thousand and minus your increase in, in benefits, what, what's new pay scale going, you know, pay money?
New salary?
New salary.
I don't think, um, we're looking for a breakout between the benefits and the, and the wage increase. And I don't have that with me at the moment, but it's something that we can gap for you.
Okay.
We've got, like, non-bargain groups, we've got bargain groups, we've got some whose, uh, contracts are expiring, some whose contracts are existing. So, we've got different sort of layers in there that I can break out for you if you'd like.
Okay, I just was trying to wrap my head around the, the two million. You know, what are the pieces that drive the two million over last year? 'Cause that's, you know, a big number.
We can, we can split that out for you a little bit better.
So, there would be no grand departures in terms of wages? And there is the, the, uh, compounding factor of the added retirement costs, of the benefits for, you know, seventy, seventy-five percent or so of our costs are generated by personnel, because we're a human-to-human business, that's how we do our business. So, we've got, um, also, uh, an increase of eight percent of all of our, um, um, health benefits. So, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing that we can out of line or unusual of the wage category being more driven by the costs that, um, is increasing in health and the additional burden that's being cast on.
Well, I, I would give you specifics, and I think that we have as well, on the basis of the, um, finance committee's request,
would mean that if we call non-union, we'd be, um, we'd be basically at a parity level of two, of a two percent. So, that gives you some sense of the kind of adjustment that's being talked about.
Why, why would the five-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars for the teacher retirement be in here if it's an in and an out? I mean, we keep on talking about that.
It's not, it's, it is, it's in, Ed, it's just, it's just that it may come out. So, we have carried that as an expense, and it is carried in that line.
But I thought you said it's added to your, what you get from the state?
This is just the expenditure side. So, we have to account for the five-hundred and, we'll get a bill for five-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand and six-hundred-and-twenty-five. We have to pay that bill. Now, the, the...
But in reality, this number is really net of five-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars. You could take the five-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars right out of here, and then you could really talk about salaries and benefits.
Yeah, it's, it's inflated by the over half-million dollars of that additional cost.
That's the danger of comparing one year to the next. If you have that kind of anomaly, it, it has dramatic effects.
And, and don't, and don't be mistaken, that number, we are obligated at this point to carry that as an expense. And I think what has been explained and what just seems a little strange, because, um, the school funding is through this very complicated formula that is run by the state, money was taken, and they said, this will, this will, this is, um, half about, about half of what's needed to cover these costs. We're gonna run it through the EPS formula, and you will, you will get your, your share. So, running it through, we still ended up with a subsidy decrease of over one-point-two million dollars. And on the expense side, we got a five-hundred-thousand-dollar bill. So, if in fact the five-hundred-thousand-dollar bill goes away, that money will all be pulled back out from the EPS formula. And we would likely end up with a subsidy, so it's just, it's, it's either up, it's above the line or below the line here, a subsidy that would in, that would decrease by, if we were lucky, oh, commence with five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars.
Is, is, is this number truly for the retirement funds for the teachers that you have employed for you?
Yes.
It is?
It's a, it's a, a percentage.
Yeah.
Two-point-six-five percent of the salaries of the teacher and the impact that belong to that retirement system calculated on the actual production.
It's not, it's not a percentage of the total state based upon some formula.
No, no, this is just... Don't give them any ideas.
Well, I, I mean, it wouldn't surprise me. The state does a lot of crazy things, right?
I think it's important just to, to note that it, it has to stay on the expenditure side, because we have to have our appropriations validated. So, when that bill comes, if we don't have the funding on the appropriation sides to pay it, then we're stuck. If we don't get that bill, then we won't have to spend the money, but we'll have a reduction in revenue, so we'll need that to offset the loss of revenue. But we've put it on the expenditure side at the direction of the Department of Education, because basically, they're saying you're gonna pay a bill every month. You need your voters to tell you you can pay that bill. So, that's why it's on that side.
I guess...
I was gonna say, so when I'm sitting down and, and I'm looking at the budget that I had previously with the line items in it, and I pluck out a salary and look at it and say, you know, eight-corner ed tech wages, and they're up fifty-four percent, I mean, this is reflective of the total impact in that line? So, of, of the impacts from the revenue sharing, that these aren't...
I, I don't, you cannot go to one line item and have it tell you a story about anything. It could be that, um, that ed tech, uh, salaries are up because we, we added additional ed techs there.
And also, an ed tech could be state mandated, because there is a special needs student that needs a one-on-one ed tech, which we're obligated by law to provide.
Okay.
So, that could be the hiring of two ed techs, and there had only been two previously.
Okay. So, if I swap over to teacher salaries at Pleasant Hill and it's up ten percent, I guess, I mean, if I pick a different line to look at, that's...
That could just be a student population shift. I mean, that's, that's why one line, it's hard to just look at one and think, well, we could cut there. It looks really inflated, because it's all student-driven by numbers of kids in classrooms and what we have...
So, is there...
I mean, there's so much is obligated by the state that we have to spend.
Okay.
So, it could be special needs students, it could be gifted and talented students, it could be, um, adaptive equipment, Title I reading support. I mean, it could be anything. So, it's not that we just felt like we wanted smaller class sizes at Pleasant Hill, if that's what you're looking at. I mean, it's, there's so much that's out of our control for spending that's required by law, that it's hard to even look at one line and say, well, we could just cut that because it's too high. I mean, we don't have discretion like that in, I'd say, three-quarters of the expenditures, at least.
So, well, there's, okay, so there's some staffing level changes then, where are...
There are constant staffing changes.
Okay, so, the...
Especially from one, one, uh, one program to another, from one school to another, adjustments in terms of special needs for incoming students, um...
Yeah, and I don't think you're talking about, um, changes in adding FTEs, because, um, it was a question that you asked recently, and I think George spoke to it a little bit earlier. We've actually added back, since the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, the few years when we cut forty-two positions, we've added back, I think, fourteen.
Some of the positions were unfilled positions that you didn't fill, and some were by attrition.
But we eliminated forty-two positions, and we still have twenty-five down from where we were then. So, my, my point is that we're not talking about new people, but we, we may be talking about new hires in, in a position. So, if a teacher leaves and a new person comes in to take that person's position, they may be on a different place. be on a different place in the salary table. That's something that occurs to me as you're picking out a line and saying, you know, this might be a little different.
What are these swings? Because it's a question I'm gonna get asked, well, what do you mean, you're getting ten percent raises? I mean, we're not, you know.
Right, and you're not that person necessarily.
And you're probably gonna see the same swings in another direction in other lines, because you're gonna have somebody new coming in and somebody retired. So you'll look at another line and maybe that line might show that, that set of teachers went down a little bit, because now they've got younger, newer teachers and two people retired. So the, the picture overall, it's basically the same staff, but there is a lot of motion. And if you think about the fact that we start to budget these folks and through the town does the same thing, we start to do our budget calculations in December. By the time we get a budget, it's June. In September, we have people coming and going, we have new hires, we have resignations. We've got a whole different crew out there by the time we actually put that budget into place and we're, we're spending that money. So I think we can, we can quantify it in chunks, but I think it is gonna be a little deceptive if you're trying to, to match one line and, and make that percent increase.
Also, also in that ed tech line that you're looking at, Jessica, you can correct me if I'm wrong, truly, in the, isn't there state requirements if you, they all go to tech three?
Yeah, with three, two of them in the classroom, yes.
Okay, so you've also got levels within the techs. Those ed technicians, their assistants, like their.
Teaching assistants for the classroom.
They aid with supporting students. And sometimes they're assigned to specific students, but, but my point is, there's also levels within which they, you know, they're certified by the state, so as they go up a level, then they also get an additional pay increase.
I just ask, it would seem like a, a seemingly very simple question has become quite confusing. And I appreciate it's very difficult to collect a line, there's a, there's a story to tell about each one of them and justify. But when I was asked the question, what are the police getting this year in the contract? They're getting two and a half percent.
Look at the con, yeah, look at the contract. That's what they're getting.
Are you not able to give us that simple an answer, or?
We're negotiating.
You're in negotiations on this?
Teachers, it's happening right now.
The biggest group is the teachers and they're in negotiations for next year.
So could you come in possibly?
I heard the first one that I heard you say, because it's just everything we're contractually obligated for, so that.
So as it is right now, if, if, if nothing changed and they just, everyone who.
Kept the same contract.
Kept the same contract in the same position.
Thank you.
Has aged a year, that's what we're obligated to pay.
We're using, we're using the same contract, the aspiring contract as our contract.
Okay, so where is that number at? Is that a flat, like you said, where union contracts are, you know, for police are three? I mean, what's teacher?
I don't, I don't have it before.
They're, they're varying scales anyway, right? I mean, it's not just like an arbitrary, just everybody gets a two percent or two and a half percent, but there's different scales depending on how you move through the, through the ranks as, as.
Well, based on degrees, based on years of experience and so forth, I don't know if I could come up with a call off the top of my head, since it's a third year of a three-year contract, but I think it's in the two percent range.
And it certainly is appropriate to be aloof on, because you're in negotiations, perhaps we can share offline further information with, with the regional counselors, allowing to.
I think there's also things that we, that we can easily share publicly and just, you know, break it out so that it's a little simpler to understand and that we're, you know, we're not trying to look like there's sort of weird scary things in there.
How long, how long a period of time does a contract normally cover?
The last one was three years.
Three years.
Typically, four years.
Is that why you're negotiating now a three-year contract?
That, yeah, we, we hope, but it's not, I mean, that's a part up for debate, a part of the negotiation, so, duration of the contract.
So if we're negotiating now, is it possible that they, you know, the union might be willing to talk about maybe less of an increase and that would have an impact?
That's all part of the negotiation. We can't really comment on those kinds of things, you know, they're, you have to come to the bargaining table in good faith, you can't say, I'm only gonna, we're only gonna act. You have to go with an open mind, you talk to each other and go back and forth, and it's not, it's not something that's done in one meeting we've already had.
Let's suffice it to say that when either municipal or the school department negotiates contracts that we consider, you know, you know, negotiating certainly in respect of holding the line as best possible, and I think that's what everybody's got to do at the general stage, and that's, which we have to look at down the road. And next year, we're gonna run into the same problem a year after that, and I don't wanna counsel them, we've, we've, we have to negotiate now. That's, you know, we can't talk about that. Kate, Kate, I have some comments. She's been quiet, I told her not to talk too much.
I, I, no, I'm good, I think, I'm, there's a chance I'm gonna have a couple, I wanna, there's a couple of things I wanna go through a little bit further. I may have some questions before we vote next week on certain things. I do think it's important to say that I don't, I'm, I'm seeing some people looking at this as a, as a black and white thing, where, you know, it's not just straight down, I mean, it's not cut and dry, you know? And I don't think when people say, or email us saying, this is crazy, it doesn't mean that they're not supporting the schools. And so I think that's an important thing to say. I think Scarborough in a whole, at least the last twelve years that I've lived here and had kids in the, in the district, has always been incredibly supportive of the schools. As a parent, you know, you showed a lot of numbers tonight and a lot of graphs, and, and those are helpful, but as a parent, looking at it from the other side, I've been thrilled with the education that my kids have gotten. I think they have top-rate teachers, I think they've had top-rate services, and so I don't think anybody's saying we don't wanna support those things anymore. What they're saying is, I can't afford to live here if this is what's gonna happen. And that's, that's hard as a counselor to swallow. I mean, I make no bones about it, I'm a huge school supporter, but it's very difficult for me when I'm getting emails and phone calls from people that are telling me, I wanna be supportive, I, hey, Mike, I've had six kids graduate from Scarborough High School, but I can't afford to live here anymore. So I think, um, it's not, it was important for me to get across it, it's not, I don't wanna support the schools, it's not like, I don't, I'm not hearing that actually from anyone. It's just frustration over, as Ed pointed out, that's a, a very, very large pill to swallow in four years if this is, if this is what goes through. So.
But I think too, at the same time, you have to look at how much you enjoy living in Scarborough. I've lived in Scarborough for sixty years now, and, um, maybe more than that.
Seventy.
Sixty-one years. Um, and somebody helped put me through school, and I'm retired, and I'm fortunate that I'm still able to work, and three hundred and somewhat dollars, three hundred and eighty-four dollars more on my taxes is, is tough, but if I break it out by, by week, and if I, um, subtract something else that, you know, that maybe not get the coffee latte or, or every day, or, you know, something like that, I mean, we, I think people do find ways in which to afford what, what has to be. And we've done, I think, I, I think on both municipal and the school side, have done an admirable job of trying to bring it down to some, somewhat, and, uh, but there's ways in which people will make it, make do and adjust. I mean, I go to the grocery store and instead of the average twenty-five dollars, I spend thirty-five just popping into the grocery store, so things have gone up here too. So you adjust your, you know, your, your living. There are those, those people that are on that low end of the middle class that are, you know, one step away from, you know, jump, you know, off the cliff, and then certainly there are a lot of pork flops that live in Scarborough. But, you know, I think we can't let both the municipal department and the infrastructure deteriorate and the schools deteriorate and say, wow, what a wonderful town's Scarborough is.
I think it's important.
We need to, we need to support it.
Yeah. I think it's important to say too, as a new counselor coming in, uh, this, this is an incredible amount of work, just seeing it from the town side and, and watching what the school goes through. I think it's important for the public to know how much work this financial committee on both sides does. This isn't something that they just throw a bunch of numbers into a spreadsheet and call it good. I mean, this is, I can't even, I couldn't even begin to count the amount of hours that goes into this, so.
Just volunteer for next year.
So I, I think it's for the public to know, I, it literally blew me away this year to see the amount of work that both sides have done, so kudos to both, to all of you for what, what you've accomplished.
And Jim, you have been very quiet over there. Do you have any comments or questions that you would like to ask?
I'm just gonna try to wrap up.
Yeah, I'm not happy I'm quiet.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but not totally quiet. One thing that, that I think has been forgotten a little bit is, is people have given without much argument, three percent. So it's not like they're not giving anything at all. And I find it difficult riding both sides of the horse here. I mean, I know we need a good school system, and we need to have houses fall in town, but it's getting pretty scary with the businesses that we think we're gonna maybe put on their backside down the road as the businesses are becoming vacant up and down Route One. And people, as a rule, are not economically satisfied with what's going on in their own personal lives, which equates on to the town side of things. And I don't have an answer to it, if that's what you're asking me, you can ask me, but I don't have an answer, but I have an answer that what people have in their mind of three percent is what they can afford, it's sort of like tithing at the church in a different fashion, but if they can't afford it, they can't afford it. So what do you do? And, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a sit-down between us where you say, well, we're gonna stop here. That is never gonna fly with me, never. By the same token, when the people are coming across totally upset, and I agree with Kate in the amount of calls, I, last year, I didn't get six. This year, between calls and emails, I have had fifty. And I got them, half of them sitting right here. People just can't do it. And we as a council don't have the liberty of line items, quite frankly, I don't want them, but we can only give you a number that we can work with. And it's not up to you to work with that number. Whatever it takes, it's like any other business. It's got to be worked so there's most satisfaction all the way around the table. And, you know, I, I spent three hours today going through these line items, they don't mean much to me because I don't think I can read them properly. 'Cause what I see in here, sped salaries of two million dollars and sped substitute wages of a hundred thousand dollars, to me, that doesn't make any sense, but it doesn't make correct sense either. And it's not up to me to sit down and make individualized work. Give an X number of those, we gotta push it back and see where we can fill in the gaps. But I mean, the teacher's gotta work with you also. I mean, it's no different than anywhere else in, in the business world. Obviously, I don't want it to come to a point where the teachers get together like Hostess did and said, eh, goodbye. You know, I, I, I don't believe we're nearing that. By the same token, we have to keep it in the back of our mind. And you look at the empty buildings up and down Route One, and you look at the real estate. People don't have the money, and we've got a community that's got thirty people that are sixty years old or older. They, they can't go get a second job or a third job or a fourth job, or call up and say, I didn't get a few hundred in my social security check. You can't spend what you don't have. If you go to the grocery store with a hundred bucks, that's all you can spend. And that, that's really the end of what I, what I'm gonna say.
Just, uh, instead of a housekeeping matter, I, I thought the school would have touched on, uh, the school capital projects. It's all provided to you, I just wanted to alert you to one that was not contained in the actual finance committee, a little bit of 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 a